Good evening, and it is a great evening in North Las Vegas. We welcome you to our city council meeting. There are two public forums set aside for public comment. One at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. If you wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards located on the table outside of the main entrance and over on the podium rail over here. Please give the card to the city clerk. She sits right here. There she raised her hand for you. I'll call upon you to speak. That we request that council that you limit your comments no more than three minutes, and we try to avoid repetition. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with the Nevada Open Meeting Law?
Mayor, yes, we are in compliance.
Great. Tonight, we had the opportunity to have an invocation given by Pastor Thomas Newson from Grace Point Church. Following that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Erin Work and Ryan Servino of Troop 562. Please rise.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight with Thanksgiving. We thank you for the breadth of life you have given us. We thank you for your grace and power. Lord, we thank you for your love, love that you have given us without any discrimination. God, we are thankful for the great leaders that you have given us, from national leaders to our local leaders here with us. Lord, grant them wisdom to help our community and those in our community that feel helpless. God, I pray for peace and protection for the members of this council. I pray for them to have clarity and patience, that they will have the hunger to act with justice, equality, and peace. Lord, you have blessed us with such a great city. Help us use our positions to help grow and love the city of North Las Vegas. Help us to see ourselves responsible to those without a voice, family, and hope. Heavenly Father, bless our time together tonight. Help us to use this time for the betterment of our community, that the work done here tonight might bring you honor and glory you deserve. Lord, it is in the glorious name of Jesus Christ that we pray tonight. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Pastor. We appreciate that blessing. We really do, and we sometimes need it. And to Ryan and Erin, thank you. Troop 562 is sponsored by Canyon Ridge Church within our community, and behind them, we have quite a large contingent of scouts. Troop 100 and the LDS Church Civic Center Award. Welcome to you two gentlemen, too. And I think we're probably all working on the citizenship and the community merit badge tonight, so I hope you get something out of this meeting. Moving on to council items.
May we have a presentation?
Oh, no. Pardon me, pardon me. We have a special presentation tonight by Ms. Dellen Goldberg. Are you here, Dellen? She's going to show us a documentary that was produced by a vendor, and she'll explain that to you.
Hi, council. So to give you a little background before we watch the documentary, this was part of a package produced by VMware. VMware is one of our vendors, a technology vendor, and it's a subsidiary of Dell Technologies. So it's a global Fortune 500 or better company. So we have a relationship with them through our IT department. They approached us during a convention that they were here in Las Vegas about highlighting some of their clients, and we emerged as a finalist. We then met with them to be featured in part of some marketing materials, and they got to know a little bit more about our city and our leadership. They were so taken aback with the amazing story of North Las Vegas that they chose us to be one of only a handful of subject matters, soup to nuts, not just municipalities, for a project imagine documentary. And they did a big piece on us that's on their website, and then part of it was producing this about five-minute sort of docu-film about the story of North Las Vegas. It's great. Their statistics, just these kind of journalistic stories that they've done so far have gotten 2 million page views since they launched. The site gets 100,000 monthly visitors, and each story gets an average of 9,000 unique clicks. So this was no cost to us. They approached us because, again, they were taken aback by our story. And so the value to North Las Vegas and sharing all of your hard work and the hard work of staff and everywhere that we've come over the last four or five years is pretty incredible, and now that's being shown to a global audience. So without further ado, we can show the video unless you guys have any questions.
When you come in as mayor and you're already at the bottom, you can't look any lower. Our town was going under this horrible duress of debt. I boldly said the recession's over. We're going to work. My goal is to diversify the economy of Southern Nevada, get manufacturing, get industrial, get a lot of other type of opportunities here for our residents. And technology was one of the very first things we had to do. I couldn't let North Las Vegas fail.
Technology makes our treatment plant more efficient. It identifies problems faster than we would be able to do it without this GATA system. It's so state-of-the-art that we actually operate the plant with one shift. The rest of the time, we have operators that are able to respond to alarms from their home. Technology really has also led to culture changes, both in our water and our wastewater system. Instead of going out, becoming a mechanic, turning a wrench, you're actually now a technician that is looking at these screens and figuring out what these alarms mean and how to deal with those alarms.
The library is really focused on making sure that when businesses come, and they're coming in in great numbers, that our residents already living here have the proper training and certification to step into those jobs.
We have people who come in seeking jobs. They have never been in the workforce. So getting on a computer now, everything's online, is sort of foreign to them.
When I first came to the North Las Vegas Library, one of the librarians, Joe Russo, he was very helpful, always showing me how to fill out an application, job history, my references, an objective on top of the resume. Thanks to that, today I work for the United States Postal Service and Amazon.
With the limited IT staff, every time that we needed to have our computers upgraded, they had to actually go out and physically touch every single machine. So the problem that we ran into is, over a period of time, our computers became more and more outdated.
So what we did is we virtualized our library system. Instead of students having incompatible old software programs and computers that would constantly break, they'd boot up to the same golden image every single time.
The more the computers operate trouble-free, it really opens up the ability for our staff to work with the patrons that maybe may not be coming in to check out a book, but they do definitely need our services. Ignacio is a shining example of that. He really used our services to move himself into a position where today he's working for Amazon. I mean, that is really the success story of what libraries can do in the community and having the right technology and services to provide.
I'm not out there in the field arresting people or working with the EMT to resuscitate anybody, but if I could allow our staff to do their jobs better, then I'm virtually helping the city, and I take a lot of pride in that.
The social contract says if residents give us money, we give them services. Your residents should be expecting from you somebody who can look into the future and make their dreams come true. And technology has been one of the biggest things that we did to jumpstart this success that we're calling the miracle of North Las Vegas. When you come in as mayor and you're already at the bottom, you can't look any lower.
So just a couple more quick thoughts. I think a lot of times, we take it for granted because we're here every day in North Las Vegas, and our residents, you know, see the change incrementally. So we might take it for granted really how far we have come in four short years, five years. But I think seeing our city with new eyes from the outside, this outside perspective coming in, it really shows the human impact of all the efficiencies we've found, how we've streamlined government, how we've turned the city around. And that's impacting people like Ignacio, who now have jobs at the companies you guys recruited and that economic development made possible in all our staff. And it really is giving opportunities. Our libraries are teaching them the skills, and you guys are bringing in the jobs for them to better their lives. I want to thank IT, in particular, Adam Cohen and Ken Todd. They did a ton of work with this. Obviously, all the people featured in the video, libraries, utilities, fire, police. So just kudos to our city.
Thank you very much. That came in on a day count, so that none of you were here, or you'd have been on it. And they just ran around the building, took a bunch of pictures, and left. We never thought we'd see them again, and they sent this to us. It was fun to have. So I appreciate you. That was very nice to put up for us this evening, Dellen. Moving on to council items, Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, wow, I really liked that picture there with you, hey, like, come at me, you know? Come at us, bro. I'm sorry, I just had to do that. Thank you again, Mayor, for your indulgence. Yes, our very good friends at Neighborhood Housing Services of Southern Nevada, a North Las Vegas organization that's dedicated to helping people with homeownership, NHSN. They're hosting a Spring Resource Fair, March 24th, this Saturday, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at 8:30 to Northeastern. I'm going to have to talk to them about that location. But anyhow, several local nonprofits are coming together to assist our community with free furniture donation. And then the Las Vegas Valley and Yucatan presentation will be tomorrow. This has become kind of like a tradition now. We have our good friends, the Mayans from the Yucatec in Mexico. They'll be having a special presentation tomorrow. In this very room, 5:30, the council chambers, it's going to be a cross-cultural program. The whole thing, I guess we'll be visiting them June 21st to 26th in Yucatan, and maybe you'll be joining us there, Mayor. But they'll be presenting here tomorrow, and of course, it's free and open to the public. And if anyone had a chance, you might have noticed some of the artwork outside that, again, was some of the artwork of Roberto Rico, a teacher and beloved artist in our community who passed away, and we had a little reception for him about a week ago or so. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Exciting things happening in your district. Mayor Protem, Churchill?
Thank you, Councilman Bro. Appreciate that information. Two quick items tonight. I just want to mention, and I will be mentioning this often now as we go forward, some time ago, thanks to my colleagues on council, we approved the creation of a veteran/first responder memorial at Craig Ranch Regional Park. If you had an opportunity to visit China Lights, you would have noticed a big sign back there coming soon. We had our third meeting, steering committee meeting, this past week, and we do have some actual renderings. And as we go forward, in some fashion or another, we'll be sharing it with you. Very excited that we're going to have that opportunity to actually pay tribute to our military, our veterans, and our first responders in perpetuity, aside from the events that we put on at Craig Ranch Regional Park every September. This year, it'll be September 8th. And I want to thank Councilwoman Pamela Goines-Brown for allowing us to have that memorial in her beautiful Craig Ranch Regional Park. The other thing I wanted to mention is that my wife and I, and my little dog Sukie, as well as Mayor Lee and Marilyn Lee, had an opportunity last Wednesday to go to the amphitheater and to view a concert by The Sea Chanters. I know you can't see that from where you are. But I don't think I've been to a more amazing concert, and it was a cold night. We had about, maybe about 100 or 200 people over there, and they were all bundled up. I didn't even recognize the mayor. He had something around his head. That's how cold it was. But their music, their performance was A-plus. And they go on tour. They started in February. They ended with us over here last Wednesday. In some fashion or another, we hope, at least I hope, to get them back, maybe to perform at one of our veterans meetings, veterans events out there. And they were, it wasn't just a kind of a concert, concert, so to speak, but they had Men of Motown. They got out there, and they were really kicking it up out there. So this was an amazing event. If you ever see Sea Chanters being performed anywhere or back at our Craig Ranch, you really owe it to yourself to come in and listen to them and see them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. That was an exciting, very patriotic night. Felt good. Councilwoman Goines-Brown.
Thank you. Just some neighborhood good news, exciting news. The Zion Choice Neighborhood Community Garden is going to host their spring grand reopening of the garden, and it's on the campus of Zion United Methodist Church, which is on Revere Street, close to Lake Mead. You can go there to learn about gardening, learn more about planting. You can also purchase a plot, and their plots are very minimal cost every year to maintain. And just so you know, I have an honorary plot over there, and by the time I realize I need to go harvest, all of my stuff is eaten up by the bugs. So anyone can go over there and plant in my plot, I give you free rein to do that. Help yourself, so that I look good, so that would help me out a lot. So that's on March 31st, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. They'll have music, entertainment, and refreshments as well at the grand reopening for the spring planting season. Also, we are starting our Movie Madness kickoff on April 13th, and they're going to be showing the Cars 3 movie, and that will begin at 6 o'clock because they have activities before the sun goes down, and the movie starts as soon as, at dusk. And the first one's going to be at Craig Ranch Regional Park. And if you have not gone to one of our Movie Madness, they're pretty, pretty much, it's a lot of fun, and it's a great family outing. And the last thing I want to mention is tomorrow is the annual Nevada Big Give. A lot of fundraising opportunities for nonprofits, goodwill, anything that you could think of that's a nonprofit organization. A lot of schools participate in the Nevada Big Give. You can just log onto their website if you want to donate to your favorite charitable cause. Thank you.
Councilman Black.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I am very happy to announce that on April 5th at 1:00 p.m., we'll be having the ribbon cutting ceremony at the Silver Mesa Rec Center for the senior programming expansion building that is in the back of the senior center. This has come about in fairly short order due to an amazing effort by many of our city departments and staff coordinating together to bring this to reality, something that the seniors have been anticipating for a long time. So if you want to come and celebrate with us on April 5th, you're invited. Also, I want to publicly thank our city's traffic engineer, Mike Hudgens, for joining me yesterday at the Silver Mesa Rec Center. We spent an hour with this group of seniors. They really appreciated his presentation, kind of where we're headed in terms of traffic safety, streets, the upgrades that we're doing in various places. And also, he fielded a wide range of questions from them and had some fantastic answers to help our seniors feel at ease about traffic in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Great reports from your area there, your wards. Now, as the time sets aside for the first public forum on posted agenda items. Madam City Clerk, do we have any cards outside of these three here? So if you have any questions on the posted agenda items, this is when you would come forth. First, we have Mr. Gary Burchard, item number six.
Actually, I think public, item six is under public hearing.
Mr. Burchard, can I call you back up in just a second?
I don't remember signing up for this one.
Okay, we'll give you a chance. We'll give you a chance on that. And Mr. Schuf wanted to speak on it. Isn't this the time allotted to speak on item number six?
Now would be the time to speak on anything but items under public hearing.
But, okay, we just changed our program to comply with them, about opening the meeting a lot, and I'm just making sure I don't overstep my bounds. So we'll come back to that in a second. Moving on to the agenda.
Item one, approve city council regular meeting agenda of March 21, 2018 for possible action.
Mayor and council staff's recommendation is to approve the agenda as published.
Thank you very much, council. Any comments or questions? If not, the chair will take a motion to accept the agenda, approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Matters listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and may be approved by a single motion. However, any consent item may be moved to the business portion of the agenda for discussion at the request of any council member.
Mayor and council, the consent agenda consists of one little lonely item, and staff recommends approving the consent as published.
Thank you. Council, any comments or questions on the consent agenda? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approve the one lonely item.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to public hearings.
Item three, approve AMP 0118, Park Highlands for applicant Insight Park Highlands LLC for an amendment to the comprehensive plan to change the land use from master plan community to mixed-use commercial at the northwest corner of Revere Street and Jarrell Lane, APN 1242151002.
Welcome, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. George Garcia, 1055 Whitney Ranch Drive, Suite 210. Pleasure to be before you, and certainly a pleasure to be before you on this item and the related item, which is the development agreement on your agenda. And I don't know if you were going to want to combine those, but I'll talk about them basically both at the same time, and that's item number 23. But the AMP basically is to, as the staff has indicated in their report and we did in our application, is basically to remove this old master plan designation that's no longer appropriate because it's no longer part of the original Tulley Springs development. It's now going to be a separate mixed-use development, and along with that, a separate development agreement. It's going to blend in well with what's planned out there. We've been working extensively with staff on the development agreement and the plans, and I think you should all be excited. It's the first mixed-use community to be built and proposed and built in some time. 50 acres, by comparison, we have nearby some neighborhood commercial, just to give you some idea, which might be three to five acres. This is, so, over 10 times larger than your typical neighborhood commercial center might be. So this will include a grocery store in that area, all the shops and services, the goods, along with some senior housing and residential housing in there, basically. So it's a great, it's going to be a great addition to that area right off the 215, and Commerce and Revere come together. So we think we're excited. We know we're excited about it. We think the staff and the city are excited, and we've met with neighbors out there, and actually, they're very excited because they're lacking a lot of goods and access to goods and services. So I think everybody's looking forward to this project going forward. We certainly appreciate your support on both this and the development agreement that helps make it possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this issue or this item? Seeing none, now this will also, this is your, this is your presentation for 23 as well, so we don't need to duplicate that, correct?
Correct. Ditto for 23.
At this time, is anybody else in the public, the general public, that'd like to come up and speak on this item? Mr. Groenauer.
Just for clarification, this is only for item three, though, that you're discussing, correct? Because 23 was not introduced yet, so I want to make sure.
Well, this is the presentation for 23, so we don't have the same presentation twice.
Okay, so then I should just speak then, right? Or, okay. For the record, Your Honorable Members of the Council, my name is Bob Groenauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing the Tulley Springs Master Plan Community. As you're very much aware of the history with the Tulley Springs and the split up of the development agreements, we're here tonight in support of the Insight Development Agreement that's before you. I want to thank Chet Nichols, but for him, we probably wouldn't be here as soon as possible as we are here. As a part of that agreement, we have a subsequent agreement that will be coming through between Tulley Springs and the city of North Las Vegas within the next meeting or so, is my understanding. And with that, just for the record, is what is the understanding is with the development agreement and the subsequent site agreement is where the Insight Development Community will, before they pull a building permit, they will be required to pay a contribution fee for all of the public facilities that are going into Tulley Springs. That money that goes to the city of North Las Vegas will then go to the Tulley Springs Group, and then Tulley Springs Group will use that money to build the infrastructure that is required through the agreement that we all discussed for many, many years. So that's it for the record. I want to thank your city attorney's office. They've been tremendous to work with to get us here also for tonight, and I'm here to answer any other questions that you may have.
I don't think we have any questions. We'll have that in the next meeting, maybe, that information.
That's my understanding, next meeting.
Yeah, so we'll wait till then.
Yeah, I'm good.
Thank you very much. Last call from anybody from the general public that'd like to speak on this item. Seeing no one coming forth, we'll close the public comment. Council, any comments or questions you might have on this before we ask for a motion? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Mayor, I'll be happy to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item four, approve AMP 0318, Hunting and Industrial for applicant Randy Simmering. Hunting and Industrial Partners for an amendment to the comprehensive plan to change the land use from mixed-use commercial to mixed-use employment on property located at 70 West Greg Road, APN 13903601009.
Thank you. Welcome, Stephanie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Stephanie Allen, 1980 Festival Plaza here on behalf of the applicant, Huntington Industrial. We also have related item 18, so I probably will just combine my presentation as well with item 18, if that's okay. If I could direct your attention to the overhead. There we go. The site is located on Craig Road, just to the west of North Fifth Street. Huntington Industrial is a, it's an exciting group. It's an industrial group that's all along the West Coast, and this is going to be their first project in Nevada, and they've chosen North Las Vegas. Your Department of Economic Development and your staff have worked very closely with them, and we very much appreciate all the work that they did, and we appreciate staff's recommendation of approval. This project's proposed for a light industrial center with three buildings that will ultimately be developed on there. So the request tonight is an AMP to mixed-use employment and then a zone change to M1. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but again, we very much appreciate staff's recommendation of approval, and we would appreciate yours this evening.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Council, any comments or questions on this presentation? Seeing none, this will also, rather have you duplicate this presentation twice. This will be your presentation for 18 also, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that'll be great. Anybody from the general public that would like to come up and speak on this issue, item? Seeing none, we will close the public comment. Council, the mayor will take a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Ms. Allen.
Item number five, approve UN 0418, Cristo Rey St. Vitor Las Vegas College Preparatory for applicant Cristo Rey St. Vitor Las Vegas College Preparatory for a special use permit in a C2 general commercial district, propose rezoning to PSP, Public Semi-Public District, to allow a high school, 9 through 12, located north of Vandermere Street and approximately 170 feet west of North Las Vegas Boulevard, APN 13913602009.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia, did you have a question, maybe on the last item?
Mr. Groenauer, I just wanted to make sure that because the, we had, there were two separate items with one vote, so the AMP, if one vote was good for both the AMP and the ordinance, you needed to, I assume you need to have two votes, but...
We will. We just want to ask for the presentation twice.
Okay, you're going to wait and vote on that later?
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Welcome, sir. Could you speak, your name for the, for the council?
Yes, Giovanni Petzi, 241.
What is your name again?
Giovanni Petzi, 241 West Charleston Boulevard, Las Vegas, Nevada, here representing Cristo Rey St. Vitor. I have one item, item five is also tied, is a use permit, also tied to item 17, which is a zone change. Those two items are related. But if I could direct your attention to the overhead, I'll present a little site plan. Cristo Rey St. Vitor is a Catholic college preparatory high school, and we are looking to build an approximately 100,000 square foot Catholic high school just on Vandermere, just near Las Vegas Boulevard. Again, we've worked very closely with staff, and they've been very helpful in helping us navigate through the process here, and we approve, or we are fine with all their contributions. fine with all their conditions of approval for the items, and we're here to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. I like that better than the casino. That's going to be a good project. But we'll see how this goes. Counsel, do you have any other things that you'd like to offer to this presentation? Because I'm going to open up to the council right now.
No, just to reiterate the items, the use permit is for Catholic high school within the C-two zone. The zone change is to change from C-two to PSP.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions on this item? Councilman Brung?
Yeah, Mayor. Of course, you know, I attend various churches, but my home church, I'm actually a Catholic. I'm actually one of the members of Knights of Columbus. You know, I'm actually very honored that we have this project coming to downtown North Las Vegas. You know, our friends over in Las Vegas, they've had a Catholic school, the Excellent Gorman High School, for a long time, and I think years from now, I have a lot of faith that years from now, when we talk about, you know, excellent faith-based Catholic high schools, Cristo Rey, right here, right down the street from our City Hall, what we mentioned, in that same breath. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve, unless anybody else has another question or comment.
I think it's in your district, and they're supporting you. So we have a motion. Please
I would ask, just, Mr. Petsy, if you'd be so kind, just before you go, just to show the public notice a little bit with your indulgence, Mayor, if you'll explain that it's not your average Catholic high school. If you just could, just for a moment, describe the brief, briefly the mission for Cristo Rey.
Yes, that's correct, Councilman. The network was founded in Chicago based on the Jesuit principles for the school, for learning. The idea is that the students are actually incorporated or are part of a corporate work program. So they partner, the school partners with corporations to have job placements. So in a school of five-hundred students, on any given day, a hundred and twenty-five of those students will actually be in the work program. So they will be off-site. They will be, they will be bused to their location. They earn their keep. They are partnered with corporations. Our firm, LGA, has actually sponsored some, some students for when the school opens. So we'll have four interns one day a week, Monday to Thursday, and they will be learning, learning the ropes of the corporate work, work environment, excuse me. So they, in effect, pay for their own education. And it's a great program. It sees a lot of success in the graduate rates, and it is challenging. So these kids are tough, and they've accomplished quite a bit. So we've seen various case studies that prove it. So we're hoping that the area itself is conducive to the demographic, and it is tailored to low-income students. So this isn't just grabbing for many. We're looking to situate in this area because we think it's an opportunity to help and restore the area and bring some vitality to it.
So when I said Catholic high school, we're not talking about, you know, this isn't like a rich guy school, you know? I'm not trying to take a shot at Gorman, because of course, you know, if not, if I did, I would definitely get kicked, even though she's way over there, because we have a Gorman graduate. So I'm very respectful of that. What we're talking about is a school for hard-working, working-class, upward-bound residents, which I think it's the very best for our city.
I think it's great. We might be a little low-income, but we're high achievers over here.
Absolutely.
So we're excited. And I know you looked around the valley and found out this would be a great place to come.
It fits, it fits the site, you know? It fits perfectly with what Cristo Rey's trying to do.
Thank you. Well, let's see how you did on the vote here.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Items approved. Thank you very much. And that will be your present, we'll have another vote, but that's your presentation for seventeen, too.
Yes.
Correct? Thank you. Hi, Jay. Nice to have you here.
Item six, approve UN zero-seven-eighteen Las Flores Charter School for applicant LVCSD Saddle LLC for a special use permit in an RADC redevelopment area downtown Core Sub-District to allow a school, K to twelve, on property located at southeast corner of Curry Avenue and Hamilton Street, APN one-thirty-nine, twenty-three, one-one-one, zero-zero-one.
Thank you. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, Jennifer Lazovich, nineteen-eighty Festival Plaza Drive here tonight, representing the applicant on this matter. We appreciate staff's recommendation of approval. Also, the Planning Commission reviewed this and recommended approval. We do understand that the school will be located in your city's redevelopment area. We understand that with that comes other uses, gaming, alcohol, marijuana. There are those uses that exist around us today. We are fully aware of that. I submitted a letter at the Planning Commission hearing that indicated we would, the applicant would make sure that the school provides notice of that to our parents, that we are located in a redevelopment area, and uses such as that can be and likely will be located in close proximity to the school. So again, we appreciate staff and Planning Commission recommending approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any comments or questions? I'm going to open this to the public real quick, if you get ready. At this point in time, we're going to open this for a public comment, and we have two wonderful people I'd like to come forward. Mr. Gary Bichard, would you please come forward if you're in the room? There he is. And after him, Mr. Steve Schof.
Okay, I'm going to just make the same comments I've made about other charter schools. The charter schools are definitely undermining the public schools. And it was just two months ago, in the, on the news, they were talking about this, that despite the fact that, I think, what, three years ago, our Republican governor passed one of the largest tax hikes in the history of the state, and for some reason, none of that money filtered down to the teaching staff. It all got stuck at the top administrative level. So people who were making a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year got a raise. If you were making forty or fifty thousand dollars a year, you got nothing. And now, our schools are broke again, and part of it is because they're losing funding because of charter schools. And I've done a lot of research in charter schools, and even though they operate under a non-for-profit guise, they are highly profitable, but they just don't pay taxes. I've been thinking about this for the last thirty years, that we have got to take another look at non-for-profits. Keep in mind, nonprofits still want all of the services. If the school catches fire, they want somebody to come over there and put it out. If there's a shooting or something, they want our police department there to solve the problem. They want the services. They're demanding the services, but they're not willing to pay for any of these services. Keep in mind that there's, these schools do not have the oversight that the public schools have. I know they say they do, but they don't. I can show you one example after another where a principal was making a million dollars a year, and then six months later, the charter school filed bankruptcy. So I have a lot, I have a lot of mixed feelings about charter schools. I also realize that they do not push science. They tend to push very basic agendas, like basic math, basic English. They don't want to get involved with the signs, because a lot of people put their kids in charter schools because they still believe science's goal is to destroy God, and that's not true. Okay, I finished ahead of time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bichard. Mr. Schof?
My name is Steve Schof, fifty-six, twenty-two, Midnight Breeze Street, North Las Vegas. Good evening, everybody. I wish we had a map up here that we could look at, but if you look at the map and you look at the new theater that's going in, this high school is only two-hundred feet away from that theater, and I know that there's been a four-hundred-foot restriction as far as schools being built by any, any place that can sell liquor or supply liquor. And if the other buildings that are just off to the east, I guess, of that building are only a little over a hundred feet away from that school, that's an issue I think that should be considered. I mean, I like the idea of schools, the development, everything, but any place else, you wouldn't allow this. I mean, you've stopped Dottie's from going into places because they were too close to another school or to homes. That's something that should be considered. It's also underparked. They plan on eventually using the area behind the theaters. I think it's going to be a hundred and seventy-six, a hundred and sixty-six spaces behind the theaters, which is not even their property. They're going to use that for their parking after they get the high school done. I don't know why that should be considered, and that might be setting a precedent. Say, somebody wants to build something, and they don't have the parking. They say, well, we'll put in ten parking spaces, but we're going to use the four-hundred-and-fifty parking spaces over at Lowe's, and consider that as our parking area. I think there's three things there that you should consider. The parking behind the theaters, which is not their property, and it's right next to the theaters, which is possibly considered to be school property. I don't know how that works. But those three things should be considered before you do this, especially the liquor and the, and the parking situation with possible future people saying, we don't have the parking, but we're going to use somebody else's parking as our overflow. So thank you for listening to my concerns.
Thank you. We'll bring Ms. Jennifer back. Is she here? There she is. Yes, ma'am.
If you could look at the overhead. There's something on the overhead. Please. Thank you. So this is the proposed site plan for the...
Could you speak up just a little for me?
Yes. This is the proposed site plan for the charter school. The parking spaces that were just referenced are technically off-site. They are located just south of the school boundary, but behind the commercial area. The way the commercial is set up, this is really a no-man's-land in the back. In other words, all the parking for the theaters and all of that sits in front of the theater. As you move towards Las Vegas Boulevard, they're well overparked. This was negotiated specifically with the school to use this. As we expand, eventually, this school will open up to be a K through twelve. It will not start out that way, but as we expand, we may, in fact, use this off-site parking down the road. The reason I mentioned the thing about the proximity of the school to other types of uses, schools can always come closer to uses that include gaming or alcohol or marijuana. The reverse is not true. Those uses cannot go to the school. So you have situations where you have uses that might want to come in near a school, and they can't by code. But schools can choose the areas that they want to go in, and that is why I go back to my earlier statement that this school and this applicant recognizes it's in a redevelopment area. Uses already exist down there, including on the property that's immediately south of us, and we still believe it's a compatible use. The property is gated all the way around. It's a closed campus. Kids, once they're on campus for school, are not allowed to leave for lunch or any other time. So we don't view the proximity of gaming, alcohol, or even the medical marijuana, or the marijuana dispensary as being problematic to the location of this school.
Is there any somewhere else within the valley that has schools and businesses and stuff like that? Or could you discuss that with me?
Yeah, actually, in your city, the same applicant has a school...
At where?
...that was built in your city.
Okay.
At LoSi, just north of Craig Road, behind the Lowe's. And within that commercial center is a Lowe's, but there's also a tavern, and other kinds of uses are located right there. There's a casino, the Cannery, kitty corner from the Lowe's, and the charter school sits immediately to the north of the Lowe's on LoSi.
Is Las Vegas, they've got some urban schools. Does this happen, growth in their area with schools? I'm just curious.
I'm trying to think if, I mean, certainly, there's the one that automatically comes to mind, which is the high school in downtown Las Vegas. And as Las Vegas has, downtown Las Vegas has done redevelopment, they've even opened up Fremont Street East for bars to be right next to each other. And as you do that, those bars are incredibly close to that high school that has been there for a number of years. So yes, there's definitely precedent for those types of uses to coexist in the same place.
I see. Thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any comments or questions with Ms. Jennifer?
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Lazovich. I appreciate your presentation. I think also, as I understand, there's, one thing that was explained to me is a kind of a partnership that may very well develop between Maya and the school, to where if there are engagements in which there are presentations, they will probably be doing partnerships in which the students will be able to take a minor field trip, walk across to the, to the theater, and actually engage in these presentations. That's also part of the plan, isn't it?
I've definitely heard that discussed. And just again, to point out a nuance on that, that would be for a field trip. Otherwise, our students are not allowed to leave campus. And I think that that's important to remember.
Also, I guess, the, the operators of school are also very much, as I understand, very well open to using or having available this soccer field on the weekends. And of course, you know, in the downtown area, any green space is at a premium, you know, compared to other parts of the valley, which, you know, it's kind of like an amenity for us to where this, is that also correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much. I want to thank very much our staff that has worked, of course, with you and with the developer, to make sure that this partnership, to where there's, we're looking ahead to make sure there are no future conflicts. We definitely would like to have restaurants that are coming in to the area, of course. Many of these restaurants will depend very much on, on an alcohol license, and they will be able to come in. We'll have to have, we'll be able to have nice sit-down restaurants in the immediate area because of this agreement, which will probably lead to some overall growth and some, how should I say, some prosperity for these restaurants. So I want to thank our staff that made that happen, legal and everyone else as well. I'll probably make the motion, but of course, I don't know if anyone else has any questions.
I have, I just have a question. You know, some good points were brought up by the other speakers. One is, I have been over to Quanum Akall, reading books, reading, you know, Prince, Reading Week, and over at Jim Bridger taking tour, and each of those schools have a lot of those, what are they called, Grant, those buildings that are outside the school, portables, the portables? There's a lot of students in that area that are just living in portables over there. I don't think that we want to continue to do that, but we don't want to hurt our school district either. But in this particular case, we don't have enough, we have an abundance of children in that area right now, and I don't know anywhere else where we could add or build another school. So I get the point that was made, and I also get the point of the reality that, that we are getting a lot of young men and women coming into these, rehabbing these areas. You know, they're coming with young families now, and they're changing. So anyway... That's all I had to offer. Councilman?
The only other thing I wanted to add, and again, respecting the concern of Mr. Schof and our concern as well. Obviously, yourself and your client did due diligence to determine the need for a school in that area. What was your finding on that?
Well, generally speaking, again, we represent this client. Mr. Gronauer represents them on most of their sites that they have all around the Las Vegas Valley. And it's my understanding that they have waiting lists for students to get into their locations of upwards of two thousand kids. Now, I can guarantee you, they know what they're doing when they go and look for a site, and if they think this is the right site, they, every single campus that they have opened has always been incredibly successful and has a waiting list. Now, that both speaks highly of the school, but it's still a waiting list, and so there's still, you know, definitely a need for more of these types of campuses. And that was part of their due diligence when they looked into this site.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd also like to make one more, one other point. Regardless or irregardless of how we feel about charter schools, this isn't necessarily a vote up and down on the charter school system itself. What this is, is a vote on the land use, and I want to make that perfectly clear, unless I'm, unless I'm speaking out of order on this. But this is on the land use itself. The body, as I understand, we're not up here to debate the merits of a charter school, the charter school system, or how it's competing with our school district. Again, this is about land use itself and not picking one over the other. And this is coming from, full disclosure, I'm a public school teacher, and my colleague also works for a public school system. And so what we are considering is the land use of this, of this school, not... of this, of this school, not whether we agree on alternatives to the public school system. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to business.
Item seven, received presentation by Grant Henville, School Associate Superintendent, excuse me, regarding the quarterly report for the Clark County School District.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, members of the council. I'm Grant Henville, School Associate Superintendent for Performance Zone Two, and supervise many of the schools in North Las Vegas. It's kind of refreshing to come up today. I've been to several of these meetings now, and we're talking a lot about schools today. So, I feel like it's great to be in the mix. I want to thank Mayor Lee for being at our state of the district this morning at Legacy High School. I know he spent a few hours with us this morning, and Legacy happens to be one of the schools I do supervise, and I think anybody that went there would know that that's a school to be extremely proud of. And a lot of information was shared about what we've accomplished over the last year as a school district, and I think the superintendent did a good job kicking it off, and I think we had great presentations from kids. We heard some excellent stories, success stories of some amazing students that have graduated from the Clark County School District, and if you didn't get a chance to get out there this morning, you missed quite an event. So, thank you, Mayor Lee, for being there and taking some time to listen to all of the good things, not only for North Las Vegas, but for the district as a whole. I wanted to talk a little bit about kind of what's been going on lately in the school district. If you read the news, you see a lot of these things showing up, but I'll try to clarify as much as I can. Schools, the last couple of months, have been working on what's called plans of operation. All schools complete plans of operation as part of AB 469, where the principals, along with their school organizational teams, approve each school's school performance plan and their strategic budgets. The district right now is currently working towards being in full compliance with AB 469, particularly in regards to the eighty-five percent of the unrestricted funds being allocated directly to the schools. By law, eighty-five percent of the funds are to be allocated to the funds of each local school precinct. The district, in cooperation with the Nevada Department of Education, does have a plan to be in compliance with this law by June of 2018. Currently, we are out of compliance because about seventy-seven percent of the funds at this time reside in school budgets, so we are missing that mark, and we have had direction from the state superintendent to get on track and to allocate those funds according to law. Central office is a way to meet this compliance law, is working to create service-level agreements for all central office functions that directly impact schools. Some of these services include things such as assessments, athletics, summer school, transportation, grounds, maintenance, among others. Essentially, these are typically central office functions, but we know that when we assess kids, it's happening at schools. So, even though it might be a central office function, we have folks like testers that go and actually perform the majority of their work on the school grounds. Likewise, custodial and grounds, the custodial and grounds crew is not hired to just handle the grounds at central office buildings. They're obviously out in the three hundred and fifty-plus schools, so it's an exercise of moving those funds, or at least the proportional amount of those funds, that are actually spent to beautify and to keep our schools clean with the schools. These fifty service-level agreements will be created, like I said, by the end of June, and these agreements will detail the district cost for providing the service as well as a per-unit cost. Eventually, schools will have the autonomy to pay for this service or know the value of that service and have the opportunity to take those funds and provide for the service in another way, through possible outsourcing, all pending approval from the Board of Trustees, of course. Central office will have these plans in place by June, however, principals will not have the autonomy to make the decisions about whether they want to choose the service-level agreement or outsource until at least the nineteen-twenty school year. So, in the first year, it's going to be transparent from a budget standpoint. The funds will be sent to the schools, and schools and the public will know how much money is being spent at each school, but at this time, we can't pull the funding away from central services because it would create quite a situation with staffing, and we would not want schools to purchase the service or fail to purchase the service and not have the procedures in place to ensure that things are done to the standards that we would expect them to be done centrally. Student safety, as you all know, has been at the forefront of many of our meetings as of late as a result of the tragedy in Parkland, Florida. I know that CCSD, PD, and North Las Vegas Police Department have been meeting and certainly plan to work collaboratively to keep our kids safe. I had asked originally to see if Sergeant York, I'm sorry, Captain York would be available to meet and talk a little bit about that, and he declined because he said that I think Mayor Lee has been involved in some communication and that they really already have a system worked out as far as how North Las Vegas Police Department and CCSD PD are going to be working together to do whatever we can, obviously, to keep our kids safe. Many North Las Vegas schools participated in walkouts on March fourteenth on a national walkout day. I know Rancho High School's been doing above and beyond because in addition to the walkout day, they've been holding rallies after school anti-gun, and students' voices have been heard. Proud to say that none of the North Las Vegas schools had any incidents of any kind as a result of the walkout, so very proud of the schools and how they handled the students and allowed them to really let their voice be heard. Biggest news, I guess, in Clark County right now is that the superintendent search is underway. As we know, Pat Skorkowski is leaving at the end of June. Finalists are expected to be identified in the next three to four weeks. April fourteenth, I believe, is the first round of interviews, so we are anxiously awaiting who may apply for that job and looking forward to whatever experiences and opportunities we may get as a result. So, quick rundown of where we're at. Anything you need to know about the district, Mayor Lee is a resident expert today because he spent three hours learning about the district this morning, so.
I did. You know, to stay up there, Grant, because this is, a lot of things have been happening with the schools, and you brought up some of the stuff that we have been doing. If you wouldn't mind staying a part of this, first off, Chief Perez, are you in here? Is he still there? Alex, would you please come up for a second? We had a great meeting with Member Garvey and Child.
Perfect.
And they came together with the police chief, who was a very dear friend of our police chief and a lot of experience together, and we looked at notes what we can do, because we don't have Metro.
Mm-hmm.
We have our own police department.
Yep.
So, we need to work with you and not wait to see what they do. And Alex, could you just give us an idea of how you thought it is, things that we are already doing, that are far ahead of what the other schools were not doing? Maybe brag a little bit about the training that you're giving to your men and women?
Yes, sir. Mayor and council, absolutely, it'd be my pleasure. Appreciate the opportunity to brag about the police department a little bit and the good work that we're doing with the Clark County School District Police Department, and we have been for quite some time. We've worked together, we've trained together in how to address issues such as what's happened across the nation in our recent past, and we are doing the best we can to be prepared for, you don't want to predict and say that we're prepared for everything, but we're doing the best we can to be as prepared as we can as an organization, working collaboratively with other organizations, both in law enforcement, like the school police department, and the medical services such as fire and EMS, so we can respond in a quick fashion and put down any threats that should develop in our schools, where we are here to protect the most valuable asset, as I see it, and I think you would agree, and that's our children.
Thank you. Now, one thing we did recognize in the meeting, Mr. Henfield, is that when the more cops money was given out to the local police department, somehow you guys weren't in the mix, and we talked about maybe, maybe City Manager, that maybe we should do what we can to make sure that they get some of the more cops money to help, as a school district grows, they can build their police department, which is our ally, to solving dangerous situations. I don't, do you have any take on that right there?
I don't know if I have any specific take on it. I mean, during, specifically the late, last tranche of more cops dollars, which came from the special session for the stadium, that was something that I would think, and I know Chief was there, it was a, it was a highly, spent a lot of time on it, the body did, they spent, there was a lot of back and forth, horse trading, which normally happens in the legislative process on that. I think that, from our standpoint, from North Las Vegas, we worked hard to make sure that we were able to get a piece of that. No fault to CCSD, but, you know, they had representatives there. I don't believe that they injected themselves into the conversation. I do agree with the mayor that we have seen trends nationally, and there's been a concerted effort locally to make sure that this is a safe place where kids can go and learn and feel protected. So, I think it is something that's worth absolutely revisiting. I would say that the more cop dollars that we get in for two-eight-eight and two-eight-seven are funds that we use regularly to make sure that we're able to provide the kind of response that's necessary for our community at large as well as our schools.
Thank you. So, we recognize that you were told not to be at the table or just didn't know you could get at the table.
Yeah, I don't, I obviously was not part of that meeting, but that's really unfortunate if we had an opportunity to get in there, but I know several of the meetings we've had the last two to three weeks have been really reaching out to legislators and seeing what we can do to increase school safety. I think the research is pretty clear that a resource officer at every single secondary school at a minimum is a great deterrent, and I just know from experience, having been around for twenty-eight years, back when I was a middle school principal, every middle school had a resource officer. Now, they're sharing with a nearby high school, and we all know that when there's an active shooter on campus, that first one to six minutes is the most critical time, and in my personal opinion, I think having somebody down the street or a half mile away, I don't know that that's going to cut it. And I understand the district's plight. You can't make money, and I know, you know, it's very well documented that we're having a shortage, and we've had some major cuts this year, but I'm hoping legislatively going into the next session, we could perhaps earmark some funds that would require each school, each secondary school to have at least one resource officer in the building.
And I think, Mayor, that's something that, of course, I would speak with all of you, but from staff's perspective, I think that's something that we could make sure that we would lend some support and lobbying for that effort.
Thank you very much. One thing, just for everyone in the audience to know, that Chief Perez's attitude about those first six minutes are genuine. The first guy there is the posse. He's going in to see what he can do to stop that situation. Do you want to respond to that, or is that good enough, Alex?
You're on point, Mayor. That's, in a nutshell, that's what it is, and again, and the training that we've had, the training that the school district police have received follows that line exactly. The first to arrive basically go in to stop the threat, because time is valuable, as it's pointed out, and seconds matter.
Thank you very much, Chief Perez. I know I just called you out of the blue on that one, but thanks for coming up and supporting us on that one. Did you have any questions, Ms. Queens-Brown?
Just based on what's happened, has really made my particular school look at our safety protocol, and, you know, every school has their crisis response plans, which are pretty detailed plans, so I feel pretty confident in all the work that we have to go through for our safety training, but, and then also having gone through the budget process. Let's say that we do, you said you get that pot of money for, let's say, let's just use the custodial services as an example. You decide that you do want to outsource those, so I know there's a basic formula for that pot of money that goes to each budget. Suppose it doesn't work out. Will schools be afforded to say, you know, this is not working for us? Can we bring it back in-house? And you've lost your custo, your staff, I'm just using it as an example. Will that be an option for schools, or once you just make that choices, is that for that whole calendar year, or how does that work?
I just want to make sure I understand your question, so let me repeat it back to make sure I understand. So, if, for example, custodial services, the school says, "I want to outsource, I want to use a different company maybe to come in and do the work," that would be a one-year commitment, because those decisions are made, we just went through the plans of operation. Those decisions are made in January, turned into the school associates in February, and then the district really needs the next six months to plan staffing, because if schools were able to bow out in November, two months into the school year, and say, you know what, I want to go back to the district, or I don't want to be with the district, I want to go out, we end up with personnel issues, and personnel issues can create the biggest havoc in front of a school board, if you've ever sat through a school board meeting.
A quick question on Pat's successor. Sometimes people say we have the toughest job in the state in about fixing North Las Vegas, but nothing compared to what the school board and Pat have had to work with. We give them high fives, you know? And I know that it's probably your board that chooses Pat's successor. Is there any outside people, like somebody from North Las Vegas, could generally be involved in looking at maybe the successor to Mr. Skorkowski, or how is that working?
Well, and a lot of committees are, like Nevada succeeds, Hope for Nevada, the Black Caucus, the various chambers, there's been a number of committees that have really been meeting and establishing what their criteria is and feeding that information to the school board of trustees. So, I believe that information is getting back to them, but there hasn't really been a formal process about, and I think it's a really good idea. I think it'd be a really good idea if during the interviews, they brought in, you know, the mayors or members of city councils or county commission, because I think it would be valuable to get more opinions about what is best for the entire school district. And again, it just comes down to a philosophy of how you work. I've always worked collaboratively. If I did anything right as a leader, it was that I often realized I wasn't the smartest one at the table, and I was smart enough to know I need to listen to other people because they have an angle and an expertise that I don't have with our school board. I can't be, I can't tell you without reservation that they would be willing to do that.
And I don't know that I'd want them to decide if I needed replacement, that these good people couldn't do it, but the question is, I know that, Mr. Juden, aren't you on a board, is finding the president for CSN, or how is that, is that what you're doing?
Yes, sir. So, in regards to CCSD, I'm on, I was appointed by the legislature to be on their board for their, to help them with their finances. So, I meet with the board, we meet regularly with CCSD to go over and help, you know, craft and figure out some of their financial concerns, as well as we're working with the legislature. There's three, there's four members on that board that are from the legislature. I'm also on the, I think the board you're talking about is with CSN, so I'm on, I was asked by the regents to be on the board that's, we're essentially, it's made up of community leaders and regents, and we're selecting the new president for CSN. With regards to the process that CCSD is doing, my office did reach out to Mr. Skorkowski's office to talk a little bit through their process that they're doing, specifically whenever it was noticed, the community meetings that there would be for the candidates, once they get to that point, did not have a North Las Vegas location, so we have expressed our displeasure with that, to let them know that we believe it's important that they also have a meeting in our community so that our residents can participate in that process.
Okay, great, thank you.
And I'll take that back as well, because I've sat around the table many, many a times where, when you hear about some of the, where they're holding board meetings or where they're holding these public input meetings, and have indicated that we need to get North Las Vegas on the map, because sometimes, I don't know if it's an oversight or how it gets set up, or a facility issue, but I couldn't agree more that we need to make sure that we provide access for the residents of North Las Vegas as much as we do the rest of the valley.
Okay. Another thing, another topic, and I'll have her jump in here. We recognize we haven't been valuing what you can bring to our city. You know, we've just been getting into the process with you. We recognize that we probably should have more of a relationship with what you're doing, and so we've asked our two educators and another business person to maybe start to get together, put together a little committee and sit down with you, and where we have a forum to bring a lot of those questions that probably can come.
That's perfect.
And maybe if there's a model that somebody else is doing in another locality, another area, we'd like to know about that, but we want to utilize the tool that we've been blessed with in you, and if you can guide us to other ways things are being done, that we can get information to you and back from you. So, I think that our two council people, we soon be having a meeting with you.
Thank you. No, I'm wide open to that.
Yeah, to add to that, Mayor, you know, AB 469 does provide, in the provisions of that bill, is a community component, and quite frankly, North Las Vegas is, we have not been a-
And quite frankly, North Las Vegas is, we have not been asleep at the wheel. We've been very engaged in a lot of other things. However, this is something that I've briefed some of your colleagues on, this, the conversation of us taking kind of a bit of a more proactive role, especially, and I think one of the things that spurred us, whenever we were not, you know, kind of being included in some of the search process for the incoming superintendent. So that is something that we are looking at. In fact, Director Goldberg, I just sent her earlier a rough draft that I had talked with some of your council members about, on what that task force would look like, and some specific deliverables that that task force would have. And that's something that we'll be bringing back rather quickly before this board, and to, you know, let our associate superintendent know that we do intend to engage with him. And I also have, at your pleasure, a few items I'd like to bring to your attention once your colleagues have talked, or whenever you'd like for me to, for the superintendent.
Well, we had such a successful meeting with the chiefs. It was just, we realized we were not utilizing, I felt we were not utilizing you.
And please reach out to me. I know you have my cell, and I think my contact's easy to get. And I meet with the superintendent, it's called the superintendency, where all the area superintendent, or the associate superintendents, and all the chiefs and the superintendent, we meet every Tuesday morning. So if there's ever anything that needs to be brought forward, if you can get it to me by the Friday before, I can get it on the agenda, and then it hits the agenda, and then we're obligated to talk about it. So I'm more than willing to push agenda items forward that would benefit the schools of North Las Vegas.
Okay, great. We have another quick item. I had the blessing, Ms. Gavin, would you come forward? Director Gavin, I had the good fortune of going to one of your meetings about two months ago. Very nice people, love your board. Ms. Wright was gracious, you know? I hope we treat you as nice and kindly as they did me. But we also got another thing on the list. We're continuing to try to work with our downtown redevelopment. And there were some questions asked about floodwaters. I immediately went over there, realized it wasn't our fault, you know what I mean? Things that happened on your side of the property. And so I just, Ms. Gavin and I were talking today, and I thought I might ask her up to see where we were on those particular discussions, or, you know, how we can continue to move that forward to help North Las Vegas, because we really need to do this.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, so Mr. Hannfeld, I don't know if you had the pleasure of being at that great meeting that the mayor and I were very judiciously grilled at for 45 minutes in being able to discuss some of the items. And I say grilled in a polite way. Right. So we do have a offer on the table for a property that this CCSD is operating a maintenance yard out of. And it is in our core commercial kind of corridor in our downtown, and we have a lot of revitalization plans underway and development that we're working on. And so we've been working with the COO and staff at the school district. And so, you know, we just really want to reiterate the importance of this, and that we did come, bring the staff back from CCSD and met with Jennifer Duty and her team for Public Works. And we addressed that the flood issue actually that came up isn't something that we're able to help with besides the guidance. It actually is a flood channel issue that wasn't properly handled at the beginning of your development at Desert Rose. And so what we have gone forward and suggested is, hey, we would love to continue to move forward with our original agreement, and perhaps now this money can go and help solve that problem. We can lease the building for, you know, longer terms and, you know, both be able to create a win-win situation.
So I was requested to follow up on that from your board, which we did, and we met with your board and stuff like that. This is the Jefferson School over on Lake Medee, antique school. It's kind of old, but we're very interested in moving forward with our project, as you guys, you recognize, we always push your stuff through the project system too, you know? But we're not going to let up on this.
No, and I will apologize for not having the right people here, because I reached out to Blake Cumbers, who's the assistant superintendent over facilities, and because I know this issue comes up. So I hope you know that I'm not just kicking it down the curb, because I'm really not. And I also reached out to Rick Neal, because he's our chief operations officer, and said, you know, I knew after the fact that there was a board meeting, and that the school board wasn't real fond of moving forward with any type of a purchase at this particular time. So I reached out to Rick and said, you know, I'm going to get grilled for questions, rightfully so, because I've been the designated representative for North Las Vegas. So I don't have any issue receiving the questions. And I asked him to show up and to speak on behalf of the school district, because this really is his purview, not mine. I'm more of an instructional leader, not an operations and a facilities guy. But his, so I'm going to read what he wrote to me, because I knew this would probably come up. "The district is currently looking for viable courses of action to relocate the Jefferson Yard operations so they can bring fully, so they can be fully flushed out and bring a plan to the board for their consideration. The district has not had the chance to consider options and bring them to the board. This issue is not under your purview, so you are free to relay the concerns and comments to Rick Neal, the chief operating officer." So I do feel bad showing up and not having an answer. So I have to own that, because I've been designated the representative. But again, I can assure you, I've been shooting emails and saying, you got to give me something to tell these folks, because they have a reasonable request. And I spent a long time on the phone with Rick Neal, and I know he told me about the meeting that was had, or about the school board meeting, and we're looking to put medical facilities in that area, because the folks in North Las Vegas do not have access. So I know what your intent is, and I don't have any problem with that. I think the problem the district is having is that they don't have any place to move those facilities to right now to get that, the same work that's being done out of that yard at a different yard. So, and the school board, like I said, it's a, I can't control, they're my boss essentially in an indirect way. So I can't direct them to what I think is the right way or the wrong way to do that. But if and when you have those meetings with Rick Neal, or with Blake Cumbers, or with real property, with CCSD, if you shoot me a text or an email, or give me a call, I will try to be there. Because I'd be more than happy to be a liaison between the two, but it really isn't my purview to make decisions over real property and the operations side, because I've essentially been hired as an instructional leader, and then when I'm put in front of you guys, I ask for backup, and you get me.
Well, you said you can put stuff on the agenda. You can put on the agenda.
Absolutely.
North Las Vegas did what it was asked to do.
Yep.
Responded, and we're still continuing moving forth with you. Gina, do you?
Yeah, if you send me the particulars over what you want resolved, then I can put it, I can put it forward. And then we have a documented case of, this was put on an agenda on such and such date, and the district has either responded or not responded in X amount of days or whatever. I think that gives, I think that's reasonable to ask that of the district to do that for you.
Ms. Gavin?
Yeah, you know, we value the partnership, and really, it was a great opportunity for us to be able to have that kind of time and questioning with the board of trustees. And so we just, this is from the redevelopment agency viewpoint, is, you know, the partnership is important, and we want to be able to make sure that that's known, and that Rick Neal and Blake have been very expeditious in how they have been trying to solve this problem. And so we know that we will move forward and come up with solutions, because we know that it's important that you guys have a more updated maintenance yard and are improving your operations. And we know that you value our revitalization and what we're doing downtown, and being able to bring new amenities and restaurants and jobs to our residents. So we're confident that we're going to come to conclusion.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have two, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So first, I mean, it is important to note that item nine on the agenda is an item that I'm surprised CCSD does not have the real property group here for. And I think what it shows, and I appreciate what Director Gavin has said, I appreciate the position the associate superintendent is in, as being here as an instructional leader, but not necessarily over those areas. But I think it's a little presumptuous for CCSD to, for there to be items on our agenda that they expect this body to consider, to give it thought, staff has recommended approval of this, and then not be here to ask, to answer these kinds of questions when they know that we have a similar issue that is on their agenda, that they have not given us the same kind of consideration. So I will continue to work with the superintendent's office to make sure that at the staff level, we're communicating that we expect a bit of a, more of a quid pro quo type relationship, whereas we work with their items, and they clearly understand that this is an item that apparently won't be very difficult to get through this body, because they haven't even sent anybody here to talk with you about it. I think in past, there are members of this body, that if that happened, they would say, we're tabling this until someone is here to actually talk about it. Second item, unrelated to that, is during the budgeting process, as we're going through the city right now, one of the concerns that was brought up by Parks was our SafeKey program. And so, you know, SafeKey is a program that's provided, it has benefit to our residents, has benefit to CCSD. We've enjoyed a wonderful relationship with them, but there is some concern, I think it's a logical concern. I'm glad to hear that some of the autonomy over the budgets won't really exist until the next cycle. But how local presidents, or sorry, local principals will use those resources, whether they will continue to use the city's SafeKey program, which is, it's a very efficient, effective program, or whether they'll look for other options. So I'm not sure, it's something I just kind of want to put on the associate superintendent's radar, and something that we need to be thinking about, because this is a program. In fact, we have in the supplemental budget, some different things that, some different assets that we're purchasing that are new to replace some older ones. And this is a program we continue to provide for the community, and continue to invest in as a city, and I just think it's important that we have a better understanding to make sure that, because before it was, you know, it was a single line item, and it was a single relationship with them. But now as we have this broken-down relationship, of a hodgepodge of principals making these autonomous decisions, how will that work with SafeKey? So that's a concern for us, and we'd like to maybe get together and work with the superintendent on that.
That would be great. You know, it is, I didn't recognize nine being there so soon, but recognize that, Mr. Hannfeld, that we do everything we can to support our children, our school district. But it's also a business, just like we are in a lot of ways, and that we don't doubt when you need something, that you let us know, and Linda comes over here, and you've never been told no, and we won't tell you no on this one either. But Mr. Skorkowski and I started talking in the Washington School two years ago, three years ago, and this was a done deal, and here we are, looking like stepchildren to you guys again, like big school. We don't need to deal with you guys, we can push you off, like, you know, but we're not threatening that, but you've had three years, and we've even told you guys you can have a couple more years. You know, we don't need to move you out, we just need to control the property. So please take that back. This is going to be as serious as the CSN name change to me. Okay? So, and no threat to you, because education is what you're here for, but they need to...
But I would ask that if you do correspond through email or anything, if you could add me into the loop, because I can continue to put pressure on it, because I think, you know, a lot of things are happening at a lot of different times, and maybe that just doesn't rise to the level of what they're working with that day. But I know if I'm in the loop, I can help you by putting pressure, because when it starts showing up on an agenda, week after week, eventually somebody's going to say, shut this guy out, let's solve this problem. So if I can do that for you, then that's part of my job.
Thank you very much. And that's a very good sign. And there's no animosity at this point, we're just to that point, that I just let you know, this is as important to us as changing the name of CSN Cheyenne to CSN North Las Vegas. And thank you. Now, this is just a presentation only, this is nothing that the public comes up and discusses. Mr. Burchard, I see you have a blue card here, but this is just a presentation, we're going to accept his presentation. If you would like to meet with him as he walks out the door on any personal issues you might have, then that's when that'll take place. But at this time, thank you for your presentation. There's some serious work that was done here today. We appreciate your seriousness and how you handle our issues too. And we'll work closer and closer with you to make sure that our area of this valley has the best relationship and cooperation for the students, and we appreciate, you are a good leader for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, the chair will accept a presentation, just to accept his presentation, or a motion to accept his presentation.
No motion necessary.
Do we need a motion for that?
No, there's really no motion necessary.
Oh, no motion is required. Thank you, the presentation. I'm sorry, thank you very much.
Item eight, review and/or action on the proposed 2019-2023 capital improvement plan. Mayor, before the presentation begins, I need to read into the record the following change we received right before the meeting started. "There is an amendment to the capital improvement plan for FY 2019 through 2023 that will modify an existing utilities water design project to a utilities oversizing agreement. The current project is W 0067 Apex Water Design. That will be changed to be Apex Surface Water Project, and funding modified from $1 million Special Improvement District to $24,46,215 Utility and Enterprise Fund for FY 18 and 19. The project will save the city construction funding by participating with the developer constructed water system. The change means that the new fiscal impact for the CI plan is $560,989,099."
Thank you. So when, if we agree with Mr. Dapper's presentation, we'll have amended motion. All right? Mr. Dapper, welcome. Nice to see you every year.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate you being here. Before I get started, though, I really need to thank a few people who helped assist on the plan. The department directors put a lot of effort into the plan, too. It was really nice to see a collaborative effort with the group on some of the shared revenue resources. It was also the budget and finance staff were a big help on the plan, too. They keep us in line with what's available for spending, and probably most importantly, what we need to keep in reserves. And once again this year, special thanks to Teresa Cochran. She does all the heavy lifting on the modeling, really attends all the meetings, prepares a budget spreadsheet, so we couldn't do it without her, so I really need to give her some good kudos for that. As you guys are aware, and mostly for the audience, the capital improvement plan is a five-year plan, which is really a conglomeration of various funding sources that support large, major improvement projects and large capital outlay items. The projects are really selected on an as-needed basis, obviously changed from time to time. Once these projects are selected for the plan, it takes some forecasting of the money that's going to support the project or the purchase, as well as some estimating of the duration of the project and the actual end date of the project. And since these projects usually require a large capital outlay, they become a fixed asset for the city, and they require operation and maintenance dollars to support them. This year's plan has the O and M costs within there, within the plan, however, we're not going to touch on it this evening, just due to the interest of time. Okay, your first slide there shows a plan at $542 million approximately. With the amendment that was read into the record, makes it $561 million approximately. And I'm going to round some of these numbers, just due to the size of them, ease of listening. And actually, some of the statistics in the plan now are going to be a little bit skewed. Some of the numbers are going to be skewed, because we've added around $19 million to the plan in the last few hours of the preparation. And the presentation was already completed, and we'll adjust the actual plan that you have in your hand by the end of probably next week or so. So also, the first year cost is about $195 million. And you should be aware that this number's about, the overall plan's about $190 million less than last year's plan, due to the removal of the Apex Special Improvement District from last year's plan, which is about $200 million. The second slide you see there is fairly self-explanatory. It's about seven years of, or 17 years of five-year capital improvement plans. And one thing to take away from this slide is the last eight years or so, the cost of the plan has been relatively consistent. Next slide's annual breakdown of the plan. You'll see the first year costs about $195 million. Once again, we have the addition of about $19 million to that plan through the Apex addition. And then it kind of tapers off after that, but don't panic too much about the drop-off in year three. These numbers tend to move over from year to year as projects slip and new funding sources become available. This slide here shows all the revenue sources that are in the plan, and in the interest of time, once again, we can't go over all of them, but I've highlighted the big three. You'll see the Clark County Regional Flood Control, over there on the left's about 25% of the plan. The Fuel Revenue Indexing Fund is about 21%. And the Utility Enterprise Fund, both the fund and the fund balance, the low number there is about 16% of the plan. And just so you know, that, these three funding sources make up 60% of the overall plan. Next is a breakdown by the individual categories that are within the plan in terms of dollars. The flood control is about $135 million. You'll see transportation down there at $203 million roughly, and that includes all the funding sources, motor vehicle fuel tax, fuel revenue indexing funds are all wrapped up in that transportation plan. And then sewer and water together is about $121 million together. And then sewer and water together is about $121 million together. The next several sets of slides show the individual plan categories. We have the downtown redevelopment. We currently have an architect onboard to remodel the Canyon Electric Building. That's about $2.3 million. And we also have $2.2 million slated from the BLM for the park area in front of that new library area, and it's really going to make that area look nice. We also have a downtown complete streets project that we're going to jump on the front edge of this area to redo the right-ofways, possibly vacate a few right-ofways and really clean up the traffic pattern down there. For flood control, it's about $135 million. We have a lot of great projects in that. One to look at specifically there is a gallon outfall. That's actually on Alexander Road between Decatur and Simmons. It's around $30 million. And if you remember, a few years ago, we completed the storm drain in Simmons. This is going to connect Decatur to Simmons, it's a large system, six-foot boxes by about 24-feet box in the roadway. We're also going to clean up the pavement and do some street lighting and things like that in there. So it'll really clean that up. The Hollywood Storm Drain Phase One and Phase Two. The Phase One is ready to advertise. It's about 13 and a half million. And it's located up on the perimeter of the SID 65 area on Hollywood. And this is on Hollywood from Centennial Parkway to the Boulevard. And we also have the Phase Two system, which actually wraps around the Nellis Air Force Base. But we're currently in some, have a couple environmental snags out there on the Air Force Base that we need to clean up before we can finish that project. Also, the Vandenberg Detention Basin is just south of the VA Hospital at Centennial and Pecos, and it's a $26 million project that's currently in design also. For municipals' facilities, there's six projects total. We're currently working on the brooks, the central garage area to remaster plan that. Maybe move a few storage units around, possibly add a new building up there. That's about $1.25 million. And we have the fire station remodel. This is continuation of the last few years. We remodeled two fire stations last year. We have $1.25 million for the next five years. And most of the year one money is going to be spent on Fire Station 53. We have some structural settlement issues with that fire station. And we currently have a structural engineering firm onboard to fix that station. And also, the old City Hall campus, the perimeter application center, we're going to convert that into an animal shelter, and that's about $1.2 million. For Parks and Rec, a bunch of projects, 25 projects, a lot of different funding sources. The Cheyenne Sports Complex, we're going to rehab a few soccer fields over there, put in some new goals so the community college can play some of their games or practice over there. And that's about $1.26 million. We have several projects at Craig Ranch Regional Park. We have a lighting project for trails. We're going to convert the lighting to LED, better light the area, save a lot of money and power. We have the perimeter road, which we have an architect, landscape art tech firm onboard right now to put a road around the park for access for events and maintenance, as well as do the parking lot. That's a gravel parking lot on the southeast corner of the site. We also have $10 million from the Clark County Parks Grant, expecting $10 million, I guess. And we're going to design the park or the soccer fields next year for Craig Ranch and then nine or ten, nine or so million dollars for construction in year two. And Kyle Ranch is another one, $1.9 million, the seven acres that we recently purchased. We're going to continue on with the same theme to finish that entire area there at Commerce and Carry. For public safety, police and fire, it's about $10 and a half million for the two. The fire department plans on buying a new fire engine next year to replace unit 1398. 1398 is going to go into reserve. It's not actually going to go away. They also have their self-contained breathing apparatus and their firefighter turnout gear. This is stuff that they use on a daily basis in firefighting. If it gets damaged or becomes hazardous from their duties, they flush these out and it's kind of on an as-needed basis for those two line items. For the police department, it's $2.2 million, three projects. It's my understanding, July 1, 2018, all the police department staff have to wear body cameras. This is about $370,000 for body cameras going to be purchased in year one and then another batch in year three. The radio replacement's kind of been ongoing for the last few years, if you remember it. It's another $1.6 million. And the current radios that they have, Motorola will no longer support them at the end of 2018. So it's a good time to get the last phase of those into play. There's also a Taser replacement program. It's about $50,000 a year. For technology improvements, some really good stuff, 14 projects, 10.2 million. There's a business license lands management software package hardware that's going to be purchased. The people on the first floor, it'll help business licensing and customer service. It also allows some 24/7 access to some of the modules for permitting and business licensing, as well as, and probably most importantly, it paves the way for electronic plan review and submittals, which the industry is really pushing to get there. Public Works also has a $600,000 software package for a spatial management of their assets. What's nice about this software is it well spatially controls the assets. It'll create a work order system for out of service or damaged assets on the Public Works side of the house. For technology, there's 1,280 PCs in the city right now and about 160 servers. And the life cycle of these machines and their hardware is, or the hardware and software actually, are only about five years. So there's about 300,000 a year scheduled for the PCs replacement each year and about $100,000 a year for the servers replacement and refreshing. Transportation, stick with me on this one. This is about $203 million. It's about 37% of the overall plan. And we have, like you can see up there, it's 43 million, or 43 projects, 203 million. We're going to continue on with our quest to complete North Fifth. Over the last few years, we finished the bridge over the 15, the bridge over Losi Road. Now we're going to move from Cheyenne to Craig. We're going to widen that, reach a roadway and improve the pavement in there, lighting, some complete street elements. And also, we have a project for the intersection at Cheyenne and North Fifth also that we currently need a park land exchange to occur before we can finish that project. We have about $5.8 million scheduled for school safety improvements. We have a school safety walk audit that we're going to try to complete some of those and other areas where we need to do some safety improvements, and we're negotiating with the consulting on that right now. One big item you'll see up there that's a change, 16 and a half million for street maintenance. Over the last few years, we've put about $1 million a year in the residential areas to slurry seal and rehab the roadways on interior streets. This 16 and a half million will give us $3.5 million a year to put into interior roadways on interior streets. So it's a great new boost to our program for street maintenance. We also have the Tropical Parkway Hollywood Boulevard down at the bottom. That's another phase of the, within SID 65. It'll connect to the current project we have right now at Lynn Lane and Tropical. And this will run over to Hollywood and Hollywood north to the I-15. And there's a variety of improvements that go in there, drainage, sewer, water, new pavement. It's a great addition to the area. For utility sewer, we have two projects out at the WRF, a flow equalization basin for $11 million. It's a two-year project. This will allow more consistent flow into the wastewater treatment plant. It'll save money and actually improve the treatment process in the plant. The next one, the membrane bioreactor, this isn't actually until year four, but we thought we should put it on council's radar. This is creeping up from future years. It was in year five, now it's in year four. It's a $25 million replacement that must be done. There's no option to not do that in the next four years. We also have the Nellis reclaimed water line. It's a part of the enhanced use agreement that we have with Nellis. We need to run a couple water lines up to their ponds on Nellis Air Force Base that they're going to use for the landscape water. And this is really an excellent use of reuse water from a wastewater treatment plant. The Northern Beltway 65, another 14 or so million going in up there next year. We currently have Phase One underway where we've ran the sewer line from the wastewater treatment plant up to around Sloan and the Boulevard. That was 14.4 million. We have Phase Two in the newspaper now for, to complete from Las Vegas Boulevard in Sloan north to Tropical Parkway. And recently, council approved a contract for Phase Three, which is around, which is Sloan and over to El Campo, and up to El Campo Grande. So a lot of money being invested in that area, but I think it'll pay a lot of dividend in the future. For utilities water, $53 million, 19 projects. The advanced meter, metering infrastructure is an important one, $3 million. We're going to go, Randy's going to try to push the utility guys to go to a single meter that can be read remotely. And this is the first phase of that project, $3 million. We also have the Apex Interim Improvements, which council voted on, I think, last council meeting. 750,000 gallon elevated water system, about 3,500 feet of water line out in the Apex area. This Apex Water Design, as Catherine read earlier, this is the project that's being scrapped. And we're going to the Apex Agreement where we're going to, we're going to cost participate with a developer that's actually going to put in the water line from the Manheim Auto Auction out into Apex, and we're going to pay to oversize that water line for future use out there. Also, there's a reservoir repainting and well rehabilitation in the utilities water category. We redid Carlton Reservoir Number One last year. We're currently redoing Carlton Number Four, which is a 10-million gallon tank. And we also have the West Cheyenne Well packaged up and ready to put on the street for, to drill the first well that we've drilled in about 13 years or so. And Randy's informed me that these wells can save the city up to $2,000 a day. We can, we can produce our own water at about a third of the cost that we pay the SNWA. So it's really important that we drill these wells and get them functional. And we have four wells to do with that $11 million over the next five years. Lastly, we have the vehicles and heavy equipment. It's $27 million. I know council's aware of our aging vehicle fleet, and this is a big investment into the fleet, but we've got to give Mike and some of the garage guys credit. They finally have put in all the data for the vehicles and the faster model, which will allow them to get a quantitative approach at which vehicles and heavy equipment need to be shuffled out of this fleet and which ones need to go to auction, or stay in the fleet and go to auction. Wrapping things up here, the capital improvement plan, as we mentioned, is now about $561 million total. And year one's $194 million plus $19 million, if you guys can figure that out. And the plan, of course, is fiscally constrained, and we think it meets all the council goals at this time, as well as what the priorities are for the city and the citizens. I appreciate your time and attention this evening.
A very, very good presentation. I'll, I have a couple questions, but I'll wait and see if maybe council answers my questions. Council, do you have any questions on this presentation?
I just have one question. On the Parks and Rec project, just with the conversion light at Craig Ranch, was that not, well evidently, it maybe wasn't, I just wanted to know why. And I know we're going to be saving a lot of money down the line, but prior to, that wasn't part of the park design a few years ago, just to do LED lighting, or has that just recently come onboard?
You know, it's, you're right. It just recently came onboard. When Craig Ranch was planned and designed originally, you know, the LED lightings have kind of evolved over time and they weren't that great back in the day. And I'm not even sure if they actually evaluated the difference between LED and what's out there now. But unfortunately, they have about 100 lights that are out right now along the trail and throughout the park. And it's just a good opportunity to get the old lighting out of there and put in the new, more efficient lighting. And actually, they light better than the current plan, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're looking to see one day that that park can just handle its own self with cash marketing it and keeping that money in that park to keep refreshing it all the time. You know, sometimes it gets tired out there, that grass does, you know, we need to do stuff. I just have a couple of questions. Alfredo, the other day, we had a phone call from a gentleman who was on the phone trying to get a business license, and I sent you the information. Is this going to solve his problem?
In the long term, it will because currently, we're using existing IT staff and then they have multiple projects to work on. So they're, but with this approval of this, we can get a dedicated person to really work out a lot more of the issues that go on with business license on a daily basis.
So if somebody can get a business license from their home in the future, is what I'm hearing?
That's, that's the goal, yes.
And so they don't have to come into City Hall, they just one-stop in and out? That's the streamlining we're looking for?
Correct.
Great. And I appreciate, he was very happy how you handled that with it. And then, Mr. Hud, or I'll ask Ms. Duty, on the pavement preservation, the other day, I sent Mr. Hudgens a letter about somebody who'd been living for many years in a certain area and hadn't had any pavement preservation done on his road, and Mike was going to check on. How do you figure out where you're going to be? Is there a certain system, first come, first served? Mike's here if you want him, you know? What do we do on something like that?
We actually.
And does this pavement preservation have anything to do with making the crosswalks and painting those and things like that? Is that all this?
Well, when we go in and we do our maintenance work, our annual work maintenance, we do include updating the striping and signage in those neighborhoods that we're in. We just started doing that this year. But as far as the system that we used, we were going off an old system I think Randy put together years ago. But we've actually are going through and updating that process where we're training our street sweepers to, once a quarter, evaluate the roadways that they're sweeping. And then we download that data into GIS. And then based on the rating, it will give us different color lines on that map. And then we can group that together to make sure that we are going out and hitting the neighborhoods that need it the worst and working our way through it. So we're kind of coming up with a better pavement management program than we've had in the past. It never really was a big issue because we only had $1 million to spend a year. So we would find the worst roads and we'd stretch that $1 million as far as we could. But now that we have a more robust program, we're coming up with a better system to actually evaluate and program those.
I appreciate that. I know probably in Councilman Black's, the roads are a little bit nicer with that than Councilman Barone's, they probably need a little bit more refreshing now and then. But when we do get calls about street, crosswalk, you've hated, that just happens anyway. We work up those requests and we do that on our own. But this will be strictly per pavement preservation in our community, right? Okay.
Yes, but we will include the striping and signage when we're there. We won't go through and just repave the road and not do everything that we need to disprove up that area. But if there are individual locations that need up, some cleaning and updating, those we can go out and do separately.
Perfect. Those are very simple questions. I just wanted to understand it. Council, any other comments, questions? Councilman Churchill?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for your presentation and all the hard work that I could see that went into it by yourself and staff. And I also agree that, you know, some additional lighting or lighting inside Craig Ranch Regional Park is very much needed. So appreciate that, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No more other questions. And the chair will take a motion on the amended capital improvement plan?
Or to approve as amended?
We have a motion. Items approved.
Item nine, approve in our local Greenwood Clark County School District for the conversion and exchange of Hartkey Park to build a new J.D. Smith Middle School and a new Hartkey Park.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments, questions this item? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Mayor, I've been running this through with my mind as the ICM has pointed out. Would it substantially slow, I don't think it's going to affect CCSD's plans to go forward, correct? Doesn't do anything to stop them. But if we were to make a motion to table it, let's say for a month from now, do you think we'd be able to get, would that be enough time to get someone from CCSD to, you come in and go over some concerns? Or have these concerns already been fleshed out?
Sure. So I'm not sure how much time CCSD needs to prepare themselves to come to the meeting, but I did check with staff, with three of our directors that are involved in this, and it won't do anything if there's a delay on our part. It won't cause any kind of an issue.
Have we had, do any of our directors know if we've had already a substantial amount of time with CCSD or we have not?
Substantial amount of time? Well, I mean, we've regularly communicated with them about this specific flop, you know, flip-flop of the school and the parks. So there has been quite a bit of effort that's gone in from Public Works and from Parks on making sure that this is something that works for us and works for them. I think it's over maybe a year and a half or two years they've, they've been talking and discussing. and discussing this, but as far as if it's the appetite of mayor and council to, to move this, to provide opportunity for CCSD to be here to both answer some of the questions that, that, that you all have regards to Jefferson School, as well as this, that will not, it will not detrimentally impact staff.
Counselman, is it just, I know that Council, or trustee Childs is trying to do something with CP Squires, and this, I don't know if that is on this, I haven't seen the presentation, but I think it's just a flipping of school like Rancho, but i, is it a concern in your neighborhood or something?
Well, just a few things, some of it's, I, I, I think, on our city's end, right? I think originally, you know, tennis courts were something that we're looking at, but tennis courts, as I was pointing out to our esteemed colleague, Cass Palmer, isn't something that really fits like in, in the neighborhood, you know? Something that does fit in the, in the neighborhood a bit more would be like a, a small skatepark, which I think would, quite frankly, be a lot more use, a better, I know it's a little bit, a little bit more expensive than, than a tennis court, but it'd get used. I'm sure our friends over at, at our PD would very much likely, they're, I'm sure they would be very happy to see the local children actually going and, you know, risking the life and limb on a skatepark rather than, you know, over at the new Maya Cinemas, or at the, the redeveloped Fiesta Plaza here, that which we had the ribbon cutting a couple weeks ago. I, I just think that there's maybe a few details that maybe still need to be tweaked. And just with that, you know, it, it'd be nice to have CCSD here, maybe to put down, put their opinion, and chat with them here in an open forum.
Mr. Hannville, could you come up front for just a second, representing not your expertise, but the school district? The councilman has a concern maybe that some of the amenities aren't exactly what the neighborhood, I guess, would be interested in, maybe less tennis players, more soccer players, maybe, you know, skatepark. Have we had a presentation on this from the school district? Has anybody saw this presentation? We haven't had a presentation?
I, I think, I think councilman's right on. I, I, I think, if you can table it, bring, bring some folks back from CCSD in a month that have the expertise to answer these questions, and if we can make some modifications to, to what they do when they flip the, when they flip-flop and build the school on the park and put the park where the school was, now's the time to talk about it.
And, and I, I asked it because, of course, we have a, a professional skateboarder who's a regular, he's a, a regular partner in our, our community, Mr. Leguna, right? With his, with his bike tricks and all that, right? Of course, he has done things in partnership with us. I remember he or one of his friends were thinking about maybe doing some sort of like an after-school club, skateboarding, I, I, I think, which would be, quite frankly, something that'd be really nice to have, uh, young people engaged, but we didn't have any place really to, to host it, but like something like a small skatepark, because it is kind of far for the children in this area to, to skate all the way across town to our magnificent skatepark, the best in the west, at, at Craig Ranch. Maybe a nice something to maybe have a, a little something right here in their own neighborhood for them to, 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 to work on, to, to work at.
Does, does counsel...
That's just one example, I mean, there, there might be others.
Does counsel have any other questions on this? Is there, and you're in agreement?
I'm in agreement, I'll certainly bring that back to him and let him know, nobody was here to present, so...
If Ms. Perry could make appointments with the right people, maybe meet with councilman first, so you can get his ideas, it's his district, and then just come down the line and explain. And then, will the school start on time? What are some of the time, timing issues that might be interesting?
I, I don't know that, I haven't seen that, the replacement for J.D. Smith, I haven't seen the timeline for how that's gonna play out, but it's not in the, it's not in the near, near future, I know that, because they're, they're focused on the elementary schools that are going up right now.
I see, okay. Well, then, I think councilman has made a motion to move this to meetings, Madam City Clerk, and we'll put this back on the agenda.
Continue on to, to meetings, okay.
That will be your motion, Isaac?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we have the motion, please cast your vote.
And I'll go back and report to real property that that's the...
There's no guile in this, I mean, this is a serious question, you know what I mean, about the amenities. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Item ten, approved lease agreement with BKM Cheyenne 104 LLC in the amount of eight-hundred-seventy-three-thousand-three-hundred dollars for a sixty-month term for the North Las Vegas Police Department's Detective Bureau located at thirty-five-twenty-five West Cheyenne Avenue, Suite 102.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved, thank you. Chief, for renegotiating that lease also, it's very, very good on your part to cut the lease in half.
I'd like to thank Legal, who's well...
Thank you, thank you very much, Legal.
Very important, and that's all I'll do.
Thank you, thank you.
Item eleven, approved purchase agreement with Qtel Corporation in the amount of sixty-eight-thousand-five-hundred-ninety-five dollars for the replacement of existing Hard Cat Inventory Management System to the new Quartermaster Track Inventory Management System using competitive bidding exception for interest three-three-two Local Government Purchasing Act.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments, questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote.
Item twelve...
Items approved, pardon me.
Authorized issuance of a purchase order to Stertel Kony Products in the amount of fifty-eight-thousand-six-hundred-fifty-two dollars and fifty-three cents utilizing the National Joint Powers Alliance Contract Number zero-six-one-oh-one-five per interest three-three-two Local Government Purchasing Act for the purchase of a mobile column lift and associated equipment for the Public Works Department, CIP Project Number two-five-zero-zero-two F L T.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments, questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item thirteen, approve interlocal contract with Clark County Regional Flood Control District in an amount not to exceed two-million-six-hundred-sixty-eight-thousand funded by the Clark County Regional Flood Control District for the Range Wash and Branch Phase One Project, also known as the Tropical Parkway Hollywood Lynn Lane to I-15 Project, CIP Project Number one-oh-four-one-two.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments, questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item fourteen, award bid number fifteen-thirty-three and approved construction contract with Acme Underground Inc. in the total amount of five-hundred-sixteen-thousand-nine-hundred-sixty-five dollars, three-hundred-seventy-thousand-six-hundred dollars from the Community Development Block Grant Funds, and a hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-three-hundred-sixty-five dollars from the Utility Enterprise Fund for the Valve Replacement Program Project, CIP Project Number W-zero-zero-three-nine.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments, questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion? We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item fifteen, approved non-destructive testing services agreement with A to Z NDT Inspection Services LLC in a total amount not to exceed two-hundred-thousand dollars, fifty-thousand dollars annually for a two-year period, with an option to renew for two additional one-year periods to provide periodic non-destructive testing for the nineteen city-owned wells and reservoirs.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments, questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item sixteen, pass and adopt resolution number two-six-zero-two adopting the two-thousand-eighteen Clark County Hazard Mitigation Plan to reduce hazard risk to the community.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments, questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Ordinances moving on by election?
Ordinances listed under final action were introduced at a previous council meeting for action at this meeting, but may include emergency ordinances. Item seventeen, pass and adopt ordinance number twenty-eight-sixty-seven amending section zero-one-zero of chapter sixteen of title seventeen of the municipal code by reclassifying approximately eleven-point-three acres therein from C-dash-two General Commercial District to a PSP Public Semi-Public District, ZN-zero-one-eighteen, Crystal Way St. Vitor, for property generally located north of Vandemar Street and approximately a hundred-and-seventy feet west of North Las Vegas Boulevard, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Thank you, counsel. We already had this presentation earlier, so the chair will take a motion if there's no problem with that.
Move to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item eighteen, pass and adopt ordinance number twenty-eight-seventy amending section zero-one-zero of chapter sixteen of title seventeen by reclassifying approximately nineteen-point-five plus or minus acres therein from an MUD, Mixed Use Development District, to an M-one Business Park Industrial District, ZN-zero-four-eighteen, Hunting Industrial, for property generally located at seventy West Craig Road, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments, questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item nineteen, pass and adopt ordinance number twenty-eight-seventy-one amending section zero-one-zero of chapter sixteen of title seventeen by reclassifying approximately twenty-nine-point-three-eight plus or minus acres therein from an R-one Single Family Low Density District to a C-two General Commercial District, ZN-zero-two-eighteen, Pre-Craig Clayton LLC, for property generally located at the northwest corner of Craig Road and the Scott Robinson Boulevard alignment, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments, questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item twenty, pass and adopt ordinance number twenty-eight-seventy-two amending section zero-one-zero of chapter sixteen of title seventeen by reclassifying approximately forty-eight-point-one-three plus or minus acres therein from an R-one Single Family Low Density District to a C-two General Commercial District, ZN-zero-three-eighteen, Perris Robinson Eastern LLC, for property generally located north of Craig Road, approximately nine-hundred feet east of Comunal Norte, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments, questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item twenty-one, pass and adopt ordinance number twenty-eight-seventy-three amending title seventeen relating to zoning, ZOA zero-one-eighteen, by amending title seventeen, zoning ordinance, to allow alternative open space standards for single-family residential developments, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments, questions on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion?
Move to approve.
Oh, before, before the councilman moves to approve, I just, I would like to very much thank Mr. Schiff, who, he's in the audience, and I know this was one of his major concerns a while back. Thank you very much for bringing that, that to, to our attention, and thank you very much to our planning department, I think, who, and our, our staff who helped make this one happen, I think, much to his delight.
Thank you. Move to approve. We have a motion, please cast your vote.
Councilman Churchill?
Items approved.
Item twenty-two, pass and adopt ordinance number twenty-eight-seventy-four amending title seventeen relating to zoning, ZOA zero-two-eighteen, by amending title seventeen, zoning ordinance, to allow the streamlining, streamlining of entitlement applications, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments, questions if not, on this item? If not, the chair will take a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved. Congratulations, Mr. Jordan.
Item twenty-three, pass and adopt ordinance number twenty-eight-eighty-one approving a development agreement between the City of North Las Vegas, Nevada, Insight Park Highlands LLC, and the, and PH Consulting Services LLC, for the development of land located at the northwest corner of Revere Street and Darrell Lane, and for the development of land located at the northwest corner of Revere Street and Clark County Route two-fifteen, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan, we're just in final action, are you okay with that?
All I need to do is technically incorporate the comments that Mr. Garcia and I made on item three to twenty-three, so it's on this record for...
That, that pass-through will be coming at a later date.
Yeah, but the comments that we made on item three, and just move them to twenty-three, yes.
Those, those comments will be reflected, Madam City Attorney?
Yep.
Yes, they'll be reflected.
All I need, thank you.
Thank you very much. Other than that, counsel, any comments or questions? If not, the chair will take a motion?
With that, mayor, mayor, excuse me, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, we have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to ordinances, introduction only, Madam City Clerk.
There is no public comment for these items, and no action will be taken by the council at this meeting. If you wish to speak on any of these items, please attend the meeting where the final action will be determined, and submit a blue card to the clerk. Item twenty-four, introduce ordinance number twenty-eight-fifty-seven amending section zero-one-zero of chapter sixteen of title seventeen of the municipal code by reclassifying approximately three-point-five acres therein from RE Ranch Estates District to C-one Neighborhood Commercial District, ZN-three-two-seventeen, Revere and Commerce SWC, for property generally located at the southwest corner of Commerce Street and Revere Street, and providing for other matters properly related thereto. Item twenty-five, introduce ordinance number twenty-eight-fifty-eight amending section zero-one-zero of chapter sixteen of title seventeen of the municipal code by reclassifying approximately two-point-seven-one acres therein from RE Ranch Estates District to C-one Neighborhood Commercial District, ZN-three-three-seventeen, Revere and Commerce NWC, for property generally located northwest corner of Commerce Street and Revere Street, and providing for other matters properly relating thereto. Item twenty-six, introduce ordinance number twenty-eight-sixty-nine amending section, excuse me, amending ordinance number twenty-six-sixty-six, section one by amending title fifteen, chapter seventy-two, section zero-one-zero-B of the municipal code authorizing the building official to approve an exception to requirement to comply with the most current adopted technical codes for certain single-family home subdivision projects, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Thank you. Moving on, city manager's report.
Sorry, mayor.
Hello, Mr. Juden.
We were conducting, we were multitasking over here. Mr. Albert's here to make a brief presentation on our third, is it our third mayor?
Correct.
Third mayor, so he gets a minute for each of the third mayors, so he's at three minutes, I think.
Mr. Albert, when it comes to my turn to be evaluated, could I give you the evaluation? Because you're pretty thorough. Yes, please give us this idea, I mean, the information on the third mayor, Mr. Kenneth Reynolds.
Can we get the overhead on? In the past, I've given a presentation on our first mayor, Horace Tucker, who was a tavern owner and manager, and then our second mayor, C.C. McDaniel, was a car salesman, our third mayor, Kenneth Reynolds, was a railroad engineer. He operated trains, and he became mayor on May eighth, nineteen fifty-one, and he was mayor for a full two-year term. Back then, terms were just two years, and of note, he was the first mayor to draw a salary. They finally decided to start paying the mayor, he drew a salary of one-thousand-two-hundred dollars a year, and council members started earning nine-hundred dollars a year. He was age thirty-eight at his election. And here is a picture of a smiling mayor just after being elected. Here are some of his accomplishments during his two years in office. He, along with the city council, helped annex, annex additional land, purchase land around North Las Vegas to expand our territory. During his administration, there was the first eighth-grade graduating class in North Las Vegas, never had one before. He worked on street improvements, paving, expanding streets, curbs, improvements like that. He helped the police department along with the city council, they got their first motorcycle, and they also hired a seventh police officer. And we saw something on our capital improvement projects tonight for over six-hundred thousand for city police department radios. Well, our city at that time approved a whopping three-thousand-dollar radio purchase, which would allow officers to communicate better and also get in touch with the county sheriff's department. Water and sewer advancements took place, the water master asked for a pickup truck, and he got one. took place. The water master asked for a pickup truck, and he got one, but they only approved the purchase of a used pickup truck. And the city water rates were increased to $3 per month. Flood control talk began with the Clark County people, and they made advancements with our pumping plant and settlement tanks. And the big up thing was a $260,000 sewer system approval. Bonds were authorized at 6% with the project that would be completed in 120 days. And back in those days, mayor, the mayor had to sign each and every bonds. So here we have a picture of our Mayor Reynolds signing by hand 200 bonds that were going to be purchased. Residents were concerned about roving packs of dogs, so the city approved the start of a pound. They worked with the Humane Society, and they appointed a pound master. So now we had a water master and a pound master. Prostitution was a growing concern at that time, and the city council, under Mayor Reynolds, passed many ordinances to control prostitution. They had an ordinance that actually regulated where unmarried couples could or could not have sex. They also outlawed houses of prostitution, and the mayor himself personally went after a motel called the Edjo Town, which he thought was a bordello, and he pulled their operating license. And at this time also, in 1952, we had our first uniform building code approved for North Las Vegas, and there were other ordinances approved. One was for obnoxious fumes, and those were fumes coming from cows and horses and other barnyard animals. The city council made an ordinance that people could not house such animals within 75 feet from a street or 40 feet from a neighbor's property line. Miners were also the subject of numerous ordinances about alcohol purchasing and gun ownership, and also many parents were concerned how their kids were using their lunch money for pinball machines and other coin-operated machines, so they passed an ordinance to keep kids out of these arcades so they wouldn't lose all their lunch money. And casinos were also regulated at that time. Ordinances were passed where they could be located within North Las Vegas. Mayor Reynolds was also very active in the community. Here is a picture of him in the middle where he's working with the USO Entertainment Group. Here's another picture of him on the left where he participated with a blind organization to help them in a fundraiser. He was also very active in the community. Here he is at a discussion about a major, major veterans' housing project that was coming in to North Las Vegas in the amount of $2.7 million. So back in 1953, that was a sizable project, sizable amount of money. Mayor Reynolds tried for reelection in 1953, but he was unsuccessful. He lost to one of the councilmen, Earl Webb, who I'll talk about next time. He's way here on the right as a city councilman. But he didn't lose ambition for being in politics. In 1964, he made a run for the state assembly, but unfortunately lost. He went into business with his wife, operating a cleaning store in North Las Vegas. So I don't know what's there now, but we're 2250 North Las Vegas Boulevard. So in 1850, he had new way cleaners and laundry service, and he gave out S&amp;H green stamps. So he was a happy business owner, and no one knows what happened to him after that, but this was in the 1960s. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I find it interesting, Mr. Albert, that each of those people, there's a road, Reynolds, Stanley, you know, Webb, there's these roads. I've always wondered how they got their names in it.
And Hartke Park is coming up too.
Hartke Park, yeah, so it's very, it brings, except for prostitution, he sure left a lot of work for us to do, though. Everything is still on the list, you know?
He did a lot in two years.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for that great report. City Manager, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, Mayor.
I have nothing else to add. Thank you. We'll be on the public forum this time set aside to speak on issues not posted on the agenda. Remember, Counselor, cannot take any action on these. Mr. Burchard, please come forward. Welcome again.
I left my glasses at home, so I gotta really wing this. Anyway, tonight, I'm gonna talk about an amazing person who has a very interesting story. I can't believe they've never made a major motion picture about this man. His name is Percy Julian, and this man has touched everybody's lives in this room, whether you know it or not. But very few people know who he is. We do have one history teacher here. You wanna guess who Julian Percy is? He is a very good-looking guy. I'm glad you picked up on that. Well, okay, don't be ashamed, because this man is another hidden figure. But let's see what he accomplished with slide number two. Julian was born April 11 in Montgomery, Alabama, in 1899, the turn of the century. Now, this was a time when the Jim Crow laws were still in effect, and throughout the South, if you were a black person and you got to the eighth grade, you were done. That's it. And of course, this was an obvious ploy to keep the black man down, because in that era, they felt like black people are house servants. There's waiters, there're farm workers, and the eighth grade education is more than they need. And a lot of black people never got an eighth grade education. Percy Julian was only three generations away from slavery. His grandfather was a slave. His parents were schoolteachers, and they were very intelligent people, and they were determined that all their kids would get a good education. Now, through some miracle, even though he only had an eighth grade education, he was able to get into a four-year program at DePaul University, which I believe was a black-only college or university. He also managed to get into Harvard, and he later went overseas, and from 1929, 1931, he studied in Vienna. When he came back into the country, he got a job at another university where he did research. Now, how could we down to 31 seconds? Is that possible?
This is a three-minute period, so you're gonna have to hustle.
Okay, I better hustle, because this man made major accomplishments. If you notice, I was able to get out of that chair and walk down here. If it hadn't been for this man, I'd be in a wheelchair. One of the many things he accomplished was figuring out a way to synthesize cortisone from a soybean, which is used to this day for the treatment of arthritis. I guess my time is up. Just finish up in two weeks?
One more minute. Go ahead.
Are you gonna give me another minute? Okay. He also went to work for Glidden for a number of years, and they hired him to make paint flow better. While he was at Glidden, he continued doing medical research, opened up an entire division of Glidden that made medical equipment. He also was able to invent things that like flame-resistant fiber. I mean, he had over 330 patents. He was the first black millionaire in America. And he died in 1975, but he made the world a better place for everyone. I just want to close this out with, this country is great because of diversity. This country has always been great because people from all the world came here. The United States has always been a melting pot, and people like this made art. This guy, his discoveries, his work is still making our lives better today, some 35 years after his death.
I did not know if him knew Booker T. Washington and all his greatness, but that was a great presentation.
Yeah, and there's a million people like this that made major contributions to our society, and they're just hidden figures.
Thank you. Mr. Albert.
Thanks for the extra minute.
Jeff Albert, 3828 Fusilli Air Drive, North Las Vegas. May I have the overhead on, please? I come tonight bringing gifts for council. A Las, it's on yet? A Las Vegas resident by the name of Lisa Levitt Messinger recently wrote, just a few months ago she released it, a book on the early history of the Mormon Fort. Her grandfather actually lived there in the 1930s, which motivated her to do a lot of research. So after a lot of research and a lot of digging, she was able to develop this entire history of the old ranch, as she called it, and it's fascinating reading. And I don't know if anybody in the council has seen it, but I've purchased a bunch of copies from her to give out. I'm giving six to our library branches, two to each branch. Hopefully, they will get them on the shelves. And I have one for the mayor and the council members, and I'm also giving a copy to our acting city manager. Hope you enjoy it. It's a good book. She did a lot of heavy research, and this is sort of like what I'm hoping to do is come up with a book like this on the story of Kyle Ranch and the early history of North Las Vegas and all its mayors.
This is truly a gift. Thank you.
Hope you enjoy it. And finally, I just want to remind Councilman Barone that we have an appointment Monday. I hope you were informed. We have an appointment 11 o'clock at the Washington School to go take a look. I'm gonna bring along the Schoffs. We're gonna drive around the neighborhood. We want to take a look around. We may look for the tunnels at Jerry's Nugget, and we can also go over to Kyle Ranch, take a look at what's going on there. So we're looking forward to next Monday morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Albert. Mr. Matthew Walker. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Matt Walker with the firm of Brownstein Hyatt Barbour Strick on behalf of the Southern Nevada Home Builders this evening. And I'll apologize in advance for extending the time of this meeting, but just didn't want to let the opportunity pass by. On item number 21, it was a product of over a dozen meetings with yourself, your fellow board members, staff, with meaningful community input, which is rare and refreshing. And I just wanted to let you know that we were so appreciative of your time and leadership that resulted in that ordinance, and our association is really proud of the end product and hopes that it solves the problems that were brought forward by this council.
Thank you, and thank you for being a big player in that. And send that back to your organization. They're great partners.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Schoeff, one more time tonight.
Good evening again. Steve Schoeff, 5622 Midnight Breese Street, North Las Vegas. Councilman Barone, you're correct. I am delighted for the city of North Las Vegas, and I appreciate the work that was done by both Matt and Mark on that. They did a superb job. I think it's a wonderful thing for our city. I wanted to talk about something that, I mean, we get a chance to get up and talk on certain items, and then after we talk, the developer or somebody will get up and rebut everything that we said. But then we don't get a chance to get up and rebut what they have just said to you. And I'm talking about the Los Flores School. The parking issue was never addressed, I mean, specifically. The using of Vegas High School, being close to Fremont Street and saying that is something that we can use in an example of liquor being sold close to a school is a farce. Most of the people here went to school in this city, and they know how far away Vegas High School is from Fremont Street. Also, the Somerset Academy, the closest facility that sells liquor over there is called Piology. It's 1,100 feet away from that school, and there's a Lowe's in between that and the school. If you want to go to the cannery, it's 2,300 feet away. It's not 200 feet away. I know that we want to have development, but we can't just let people that represent these developers come up and mislead everybody. I do my research. I try to come here with facts and figures, and I feel insulted when things like this are said, and nobody asks any questions. You just kind of shake, nod your head, "Yeah, we understand, we understand," but she was misleading you. And I think sometimes we need to address these issues. I just wanted to bring that up. One other thing I want to talk about is having the privilege of being a school crossing guard, I get a unique perspective of what goes on in these corners in our streets. Today was a crazy day because they had the Nevada Move thing going on, so a lot of parents were bringing their kids to school early, which is no big deal. But at the end of the shift, we have a school police officer come up to the intersection. He doesn't even slow down. He's texting on his telephone, just blows right through the stop sign. I called up the school police and told them what was going on, but he's supposed to be an example of what we're supposed to do. So he blows right through the schools. Nobody else pays attention to those either. And I just wanted to bring that up. I didn't want to get up and complain and complain, but sometimes you gotta be bad news, and that's who I am right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schoeff. Anybody else that'd like to address the council, this is time to come forward. Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.